Mayor Christie Mauchow. Deputy Mayor Kayleigh Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Moran.
Present.
Councilmember Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
And I'd like to move to excuse Mayor Mauchow's absence as she's traveling for city business.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, I believe that is 6-0 excuse for Mayor Mauchow's absence. So for Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Moran, can you lead us? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
All right, I have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, 6-0, agenda is approved. So first up, we have executive session, so potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1i. We do have two items and may take action afterwards. I believe, is, you think 30 minutes? City manager?
Yeah, let's do 30 and hopefully we get done in time.
Great, so back at 7:02? Does that sound good? All right, thank you, guys. Carrie, did you have a question?
No, I'll just see you in exec session.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. The council is extending the executive session until 7:15. Again, the council will extend the executive session until 7:15. Thank you. Good evening. The city council is extending the executive session for additional five minutes till 7:20. Thank you.
All right, council, I will entertain a motion if we have one. I move that we direct our city attorneys to drop the appeal. All right, I don't have a second.
Could the maker of the motion clarify which appeal is being referred to?
Sorry, in the, what is it? The Jerran appeal? But there was no second, so. All right, then I move that we direct the attorneys to request an extension on the appeal. A second? All right, it's been moved and seconded. Did you want to speak to your motion? I think there's, there are still outstanding questions that we need answered, and we don't have all the right players, so we need to get that before we move forward, or not. Is there any further discussion? We just...
Again, I'm hoping that the maker of the motion can clarify, I just heard it generically stated as an extension for the appeal. Is this referring to the appeal or referring to a response to a motion to admit and consider new evidence?
It is what you just said.[270.63][270.63](laughter)
So it's regarding the motion asking the Court of Appeals to consider new evidence? You seek an extension of that?
Correct. Yes, for whatever the Friday deadline is, we're seeking an extension for that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you for clarifying.[290.42][290.42](laughter) All right, do we have any other discussion? I know it's been moved and seconded. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
All right, by a vote of one, two, three, four to two, motion passes. I don't want to repeat that. I hope someone can send it to Lita, so I don't mess it up again. All right, thank you, guys. So next, we have public comment. So I think, do we have any in person? Cool. So we'll start with in person, and then if you're on Zoom, I'll hand that over to our city clerk to do after. Thank you. All right, so first, we have Dave Osmer. Go ahead when you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Dave Osmer, and I live in Providence Point. I'm also the Chair of our Homeowners Association's Government Affairs Committee. As you may know, our north gate exits onto 228th Avenue Southeast, just north of Southeast 40th. Along with many other members of our community, I travel that route frequently to access Samamish shopping areas to the north, as well as along Issaquapine Lake Road. I've submitted written comments on the draft TCIP projects, TR 0254 and 107. Given time constraints, I will limit my oral remarks specifically to TR 54. TR 54 is listed as the fourth highest priority project in the plan. It involves improvements to the 228th Southeast, Southeast 40th intersection, which is listed as a current concurrency failure. This intersection is of significant interest to us. However, this project pales in comparison to the one strangely absent from your plan, the massive changes on 228th required to create the entrance and exit for the school district's proposed new high school and elementary school on the Providence Heights property. Providence Heights, excuse me, just southeast of 40th. As far as we know, even after over two years of stalling by the district to even make the application, there is still no right-of-way permit approved by your city for this project. The resulting increased traffic on 228th and associated cut-through traffic on Southeast 40th will have major adverse impacts on Samamish residents, including those who commute via this route, as well as on our residents who use it to access Samamish businesses. Since there is also no accompanying proposal for improvements to 228th north of 40th and beyond Issaquapine Lake Road, these impacts will include further congestion on both 228th and Issaquapine Lake Road, leading to the likely failure of that intersection during peak travel periods. Why is this issue not being addressed in the plan? And why is there still no outcome of the school district's right-of-way permit application? And speaking of the school district, I note from the announcement of your June 7th public hearing that there is apparently a proposal afoot to exempt schools from concurrency standards. This is an outrageous idea for all kinds of reasons, about which you will hear from me again on June 7th. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. All right, next, we have Ramiro Valdrama.
Thank you, former deputy mayor Ramiro Valdrama. I want to thank councilmembers Lamb, Howe, Stewart, Clark for taking the first step towards bringing the city closer to closure with Mauchow Gate by voting to release the full city investigation of the city manager's facts and findings, hopefully redacted to the 2018 standards. As the council members had stated previously, this will bring us closer to transparency of how the city does business, and as Howe and the Constitution say, reminds the council that the citizens are the boss. This is a welcome step, but only the first step, that is important towards the return to full transparent, ethical, accountable government. Citizens will now be able to see what they paid for in this lengthy and costly investigation of over four months that had taken place. They will also try to comprehend why, despite what Mayor Mauchow calls "the dirty details", she pushed such an exorbitant payoff to the city manager of $400,000, well beyond what was required, wrote a letter of accomplishments, then denied him his request for public hearing, and effectively placed a gag order over him. However, now, the city council needs to move forward and take needed actions to investigate the numerous publicly stated allegations that have been made against Mayor Mauchow, former councilmember Tom Odell, and other council members, accusing them of serious ethics violations, mishandling of confidential information, improper interference in a city investigation, violations of state law, putting the city in legal jeopardy potentially, potentially legal actions against council members, and misleading and non-responsiveness on public records requests, all of which have left a cloud over the city and leadership over the cloud, the city, the leadership, and embarrassed our city across the state. These on-the-record public allegations were made in public comments by Michael Scholes, city manager David Rudat, Stephanie Rudat, and in the comment by Scott Hamilton. These individuals have equal standing and are likely more credible and more support as to the original allegations against the city manager made by the so-called resident city blogger, which Mayor Mauchow and councilmember Odell insisted upon an investigation. It would be unethical and hypocritical of the council not to insist on similar investigations on the actions of Mauchow, Odell, and others called for the similar behavior, and potentially these include more serious than what the past manager was alleged to have done. Only then can our citizens look into the rearview mirror and feel confident that Mauchow Gate is behind us and move forward with the appropriate leadership and transparency. Our citizens deserve no less than to have that full transparency now given to them. Thank you very much.
Oh, I had one second.
Yeah, good job. Thank you so much. Tommy Overland?
Hello, council. I am talking here to request for the various TCIP projects that involve road expansions with bike lanes, that we upgrade those proposed bike lanes to protected, oh, do I have to hit a button? Okay. That we upgrade those proposed bike lanes to protected bike lanes. By upgrading those bike lanes to protected bike lanes, we would improve cyclist safety. By improving that cyclist safety, we would encourage more individuals of this community to utilize our bike lanes and cycle around our community. Doing so will have multiple positive impacts in our community. For one, will reduce traffic by taking cars off of the road. By taking cars off the road, will also reduce the wear that we, as a community, put on our shared road infrastructure, thus reducing the overall cost we have to spend to maintain that infrastructure. Will also have positive health outcomes to the community as people get more exercise utilizing their commute in such a manner. And furthermore, we would also improve the independence of the children of the community. I have lived in this community for about 15 years at this point. I've gone through Discovery Elementary, Pine Lake Middle School, Skyline High School. And one thing that I have experienced myself throughout my many years at this community is that if you do not have access to a car, it is incredibly difficult to get around this community. One common thing that people bemoan is, "Why don't kids go outside and play anymore?" Well, to people who ask that, I ask you the question, where and how are kids expected to get there? We've built our infrastructure such that if you don't have a car, you basically have no choice but to stay inside. So improving non-car transit options will help improve the independence of the youth of our community, improve the health of our community, and reduce traffic. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, last in person, I believe, unless we have another comment, is James Eastman.
James Eastman, Samamish, Washington. I think I, like most young kids, their biggest fear is they become their parents. And now that I have four kids, I find myself mimicking my father when I'm yelling at my kids. I think, oh my gosh, I am my dad. And that really hit home today. I'm 43 years old. I also find myself saying, man, what was my dad thinking having kids? He had me when he was 44, so I'm not even the age yet that my dad was when he had me. And so I like to tell people if I'm a little slow, or maybe if you find me forgetting things, that my DNA is maybe a little bit degraded, but if you know me really well, it doesn't quite work, because I have two younger brothers who were born when my dad was 46 and 48, and they're both doctors, so I just, I don't know, I just hit the genetic lottery. But anyways, today, when I walked in City Hall, McKay stopped me, the sound guy, and he gave like a five-minute explanation that, really nicely, that I was holding the mic too close to my mouth and driving everyone crazy with a sound. And I had flashbacks to my childhood, because my dad was so old. He was born before penicillin was invented, and he had all these ear infections when he was a kid, and they destroyed his ears. And so from the time that I grew up, all the way till adulthood, he had hearing aids. And anytime he got in front of a large group of people with a mic, all of us kids would plug our ears and just wait for, you know, the mic to start screeching and, you know, this reverberation. So when McKay like approached me today, I'm like, oh my gosh, I'm totally my dad, you know, screaming into the mic, so. But I'm on the north end of town, and Eastlake-Samamish Parkway, you know, T-8 was created, so it passed concurrency. Alternative 4 was created, so it passed concurrency. I think Alternative 4 dropped it from 1,700 vehicles to 1,000 vehicles, but whatever. It's the busiest intersection or segment in town, no matter how you look at it. So I'm up here, because I'm a little jealous of the southern end of Samamish. It seems like they're getting all the funding lately. Falls City Redmond Road is a wonderful project. I'm jealous of that. So I'm just up here advocating you guys throw a little money our way to the north. That's where all the failures are if we actually monitored the segments there. So these could include bike lanes. Like Tommy said, we got to get to the light rail, like, let's throw some bike lanes in there, get people out of that trail. I know I look like I don't bike, but I actually rode the U-Dubbin back the other day, because I e-bike. It's the new thing, and it's wonderful. So let's look at that and some other new technologies and throw some money to the north side of Samamish. Thank you.
Thank you for not yelling into the mic and for your comment. Do we have anyone else? All right. Lita, I'll let you take online.
Anybody online that would like to give public comment, please raise your hand. We currently have three hands up, and I'll promote the first caller. Stephanie Rudat?
Hi, all. My name is Stephanie Rudat. I'm calling in tonight about the shooting that occurred in Texas today. I think that while the city government does not have the power to legislate over guns, you all are in a position to influence our school board members, to, at the very least, make our campuses more secure. Right now, I, in the middle of a school day, can walk to my two nearest elementary schools, Blackwell and Margaret Mead, and walk straight into a classroom. I know that councilmembers Trine and Moran have a lot of interest in this, because they have or do work for school districts. They know that a lot of the burden is on the teachers, and we do have a problem. School boards could be doing a lot, as they ask for money for levies, because maybe, I guess, our property taxes aren't giving them enough. They should absolutely not just be hiring security guards à la Issaquapine School District, which is absolutely absurd, and at least have school resource officers. And they could easily be tapping into Samamish PD to getting those resource officers, not just at the middle school and high school, but maybe even at our elementary schools. Our resource officers, when I talk to kids around here, they are saying how much they love them, and that they're like counselors, and they're really good people. Now, will they stop shootings? No, absolutely not. But 18 kids this morning ate their favorite cereal, and they tied their shoes in double knots, and they talked with each other on the school bus, and they had no idea that they were going to die today. So if we, at every level in the government, are not doing something, something extreme, more than a proclamation, then we're doing nothing, and we're allowing all of this to go on. Washington does not have good gun laws. It's a joke here. If anything, any place is a model, I believe California is. But my request in calling in tonight is that our council do something, and then share with the community what you're doing and how we can join you in getting it accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'll now promote the next caller. Tom Odell?
Good evening, council. Can you hear me okay? Okay, good. My name is Tom Odell. I'm a 30-year resident of Samamish and a past member of this council, as well as being a former mayor of the city. During last week's meetings, public comments, Stephanie Rudat directly attacked both Mayor Mauchow and me for our roles in the council's internal investigation of former city manager Dave Rudat, her father. Her comments were questionable, inaccurate, and possibly illeal. These accusations reinforce the need for having the full findings of the investigation released to this community without further delay. The investigation began approximately March 25, 2021, when deputy mayor Mauchow received a text message from a city resident containing screenshots of another text exchange between that resident and Ms. Rudat of an online discussion of city legals and a major legal issues in a major legal case. Neither one was a party to the case and should not have had the knowledge of the legal detail that was contained in that text. The exchange clearly shows they did. Ms. Mauchow correctly brought this to this council's attention. This is a serious, this indicates a serious confidentiality problem and raised concerns that Ms. Rudat may have failed to adequately protect confidential city information from his daughter, who then allegedly used it for her own purposes. After considerable discussion, on May 18, 2021, council approved the hiring of an attorney from a major Seattle law firm who had considerable investigative experience by majority vote. She was given direction for the investigation by the council and objectives, along with the scope, to gather access to information available to the council at that time. A second attorney from another reputable Seattle firm was hired, again with council approval, to act as its independent legal advisor on potential legal issues arising from this investigation. She was similarly briefed. I act as counsel liaison with both unadministrative issues. I want to stress there was no prior date conclusion addressed at the investigation team. The investigator, despite a notable lack of cooperation with certain parties, did find a pattern of lapses by Mr. Rudat with respect to protecting the city's legal position. As you will read, was the full report. The investigation revealed others' issues of concern and was further called into question Mr. Rudat's leadership. Ms. Rudat claims that the allegations against her father were manufactured and represented undue assault on her and her father, and the investigation was contrived to that end. This is unequivocally not the case. Proper procedures are followed. The investigator was free to determine methods and procedures with no interference from me or anyone else.
All right, thank you so much.
Conclusions are her own and not directed toward any preordained conclusion. Again, the full results and findings of the investigation need to be released to this community without further delay. Thank you.
I'll now promote the final caller. Paul Stickney?
Good evening, city council. Happy special meeting agenda night. I'm going to speak to your meeting agenda topic about the six-year TCIP, which I've learned to rename from TIP. A couple of issues that I wrote in on, I'll speak briefly to. On the, the first issue of three is on the single-family housing and multifamily housing transportation impact fees. There's approximately projected over six years, 35 single-family homes a year and 50 multifamily homes a year. From an internal housing supply needs analysis basis, that's probably reasonable for single-family homes relative to how many there are based on wants and needs of all the residents over a cycle of life, but it's woefully low on multifamily. My suggestion is to keep in mind in future years to set appropriate, sustainable multifamily housing target numbers based on local housing needs and wants over a cycle of life, and then reforecast the traffic impact fees on multifamily accordingly. The second topic is your TR 106 and the pavement overlay program status. It's unclear to me if TR 106 is the same thing as the prior pavement overlay programs or something else. It appears to me that they're not the same. It appears that TR 106 is targeting roads that have a rating of 30 or less, where in the past pavement overlay programs, where from roughly 2008 to 18, I may not have those years perfect, but close, the city spent between $3 to $4 million a year to keep roads on an ongoing basis in the 70% to 80% range to keep them from being reconstructed, as opposed to maintained and topped. I really suggest that you fund a pavement overlay program in that same range to continue that good work, so we don't have to rebuild streets over time. The third thing I'd like to chat about is the four parts of TR 05 and TR 48. Simply, the parts of those that pertain to lane capacity, adding lanes, I don't believe are needed either pre-pandemic or post-pandemic, but I agree that issues such as traffic signals, turn lanes, other urban complete street amenities are appropriate. So I suggest that those be potentially modified, even though they're not current and they're looked at for the future, to focus on, not focus on lane capacity widening, but instead focus on safety, complete street features, turn lanes, queue jumps, intersection, and ITS. And one last comment, I suggest all of you watch the last week's planning commission meeting, and one key comment there about housing over time, just one, is I am not saying that every single unmet need has to be met in Samamish. What I am saying is that all local unmet housing shortage needs for all income levels need to be known, and that information needs to inform housing policy to what degree those needs are met.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, have a good evening.
All right, I think that's it.
Yes, that concludes public comment for tonight.
Great, thank you so much. All right, so next, we have a couple of proclamations. So first is for Pride Month, and if you all don't mind, I would love to take that one for obvious reasons. So proclamation, LGBT... So proclamation LGBTQ+ Pride Month, June 2022. Whereas our nation was founded upon the declaration that all people are created equal, that life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness are among the inalienable rights of every person, and that each person shall be accorded the equal protection of the law. And the LGBTQ+ community has made great strides forward, but equality, inclusion, and acceptance have not yet been fully achieved. We must practice these values and teach them to future generations. And the city of Sammamish is committed to fostering diversity and inclusion. And on June 28, 1969, patrons of the Stonewall Inn in New York City rose up and resisted harassment that had become all too common for members of the community. Out of this resistance, the LGBTQ+ rights movement in America was born. During Pride Month, we commemorate the events of June 1969 and commit to achieving equal justice under law for LGBTQ+ Americans. Now be it resolved that Mayor Christie Mauchow, on behalf of Sammamish City Council, does hereby proclaim June 2022 as Pride Month in the city of Sammamish, and we encourage all residents to celebrate the progress within our culture towards justice, equality, and full civic recognition of LGBTQ+ persons and to join us in the fights that remain to be won. And as a moment of privilege, I do want to mention that discrimination does still exist. You know, public schools in Florida right now can't teach students about sexual orientation or gender identity. Gender-affirming treatment constitutes as child abuse in Texas. And just last week, Seattle Pacific University's board voted to uphold their policy on hiring discrimination based on sexual orientation. We must continue to advocate for each other and our youth, and I want to emphasize that here in Sammamish, all are welcome. Next week, June 1, at 9:00 a.m., we'll all be raising the Progress Pride flag together here at City Hall. I believe there'll be some light snacks and refreshments after in the council chambers. And later that day, at the farmer's market, there'll be a community art project with Cheryl Smith mosaics that will be a Pride Progress flag that will hang in City Hall once it's all completed. So come put a piece of glass in and be a part of that. And thank you so much. So next proclamation, National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you. Boy, this is a tough one today. June 3, 2022, National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas every day, more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 230 who are shot and wounded. And on average, there are more than 13,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas Washington has 781 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 10.2 deaths per 100,000 people, Washington has the 40th highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. Whereas gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities with more than half of all firearm-related deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. And whereas cities across the nation, including Sammamish, are working to end senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas protecting public safety in communities, in the communities they serve, mayor's highest responsibility is a mayor's and a council's and any government official's highest responsibility. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best and are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, are the best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than a year of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. And whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15 on June 3, 2022. To recognize the 25th birthday of Hadiya Pendleton, born on June 2, 1997, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadiya Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. Whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 3, the first Friday in June in 2022, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June 3, 2022, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, be it resolved, sorry, that Mayor Christie Mauchow, on behalf of the city council, declares the first Friday in June, June 3, 2022, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And we encourage all citizens to support their local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. And if I may, I'd like a point of personal privilege, given the events of today. Robb Elementary School, May 2022. Santa Fe High School, May 2018. Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School, February 2018. Umpqua Community College, October 2015. Sandy Hook Elementary School, December 2012. Northern Illinois University, February 2008. Virginia Tech, April 2007. West Nickel Mines School, October 2006. Columbine High School, April 1999. And the list goes on to over 370 school shootings since 2000. Churches, mosques, temples, synagogues, concerts, grocery stores, and the list goes on. It is government's first and most important priority to protect its people. How can we continue to listen to the arguments that we don't need better gun safety laws? My youngest has to take 30 hours of class time and five hours of driving time and two tests, a written knowledge test and a practical test, before being allowed to operate a vehicle that is potentially deadly but not designed to be so. And the vehicle must be insured and registered. Can anyone tell me why we don't have at least as many trainings and testing requirements in place to ensure our safety from guns that are, in fact, designed to kill? We must come together as a community, as a state, and as a country and take the necessary steps to ensure that our children are safe, that our worshippers are safe, that our people are safe from needless gun deaths and violence. And that does not mean turning our schools into impenetrable fortresses. Please, we can and must do better. And please do not tell me that it is too soon. Because it is not too soon. It is far too late for those kids and that teacher today. How many elementary school students must perish before it's enough? Now, I'd like to ask that we have a moment of silence, please.
Thank you so much. All right. Sorry, this will be a tough one to follow. Jeff Alakish, Audrey Starcy, and Doug McIntyre for our TCIP workshop is up next. Would anyone like a break as they come on? Anyone need a break? Cool. Let's do five minutes as they jump on. Thank you, guys.
Are we ready to start?
Yes, sorry. Maybe you couldn't hear me. Yeah. Take it away.
Okay. Sorry about that. I was waiting for, yeah, it didn't come across. My apologies. Deputy Mayor, council members, and interim city manager, my name is Jeff Alakish, Public Works Director. The purpose of tonight's agenda item is intended to provide an overview of the Transportation Capital Improvement Plan, also referred to as a TIP and/or TCIP. The focus of our discussion will be on the proposed transportation programs and projects for the years 2023 through 2028 and how they are balanced to reasonably anticipated revenue constraints during the upcoming six-year period. Or said more simply, what might we study and/or design and/or build, and how might we pay for it when it comes time to adopt the upcoming to your budget later this year? On a side note, staff did receive written comments from three council members over the past two days, and we have prepared a draft response. Our response, our draft response has been emailed to you separately shortly before the meeting tonight. We anticipate that most of the questions raised will also be addressed during our presentation tonight. Our presenters and speakers will include Doug McIntyre, Senior Transportation Planning Manager, Audrey Starcy, our Deputy Public Works Director, and myself, your Public Works Director. With that, Doug, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Sammamish City Council. Again, my name is Doug McIntyre. I'm with the Department of Public Works, and we're here to talk to you tonight about the 2023-2028 TIP. You've had several presentations on this debate, and today we're going to go over the draft plan, the first draft of the plan, get input from council, and make changes as necessary. So more specifically, today, we're going to start with a little overview, background, just a few repeated slides, just to kind of reemphasize some of the foundational elements of a TIP. We're going to go over some clarifications. There's been some changes, particularly since the agenda bill was published. There've been some things that we tweaked and improved based on some feedback that we've received. And then we're going to go over the, do an overview of the draft, kind of navigate through that and explain the purpose of each element of the draft TIP. And then we're going to do a kind of a deeper dive into the reasonable revenues that we're assuming, as well as the project assumptions in the TIP. We will then follow up with some next steps and then open it up for council discussion, where we will be seeking input on changes and improvements to be made to the TIP based on the information tonight. So again, just to reemphasize, the main purpose that we're here tonight is to allow the council to review, confirm, and/or change the assumptions for both revenue and projects. Now, starting with a little background, again, you've seen these points before, but I think it is really important, especially for the public, to see kind of the foundational pieces of the TIP and what it means. So all cities are required by state law to adopt a six-year comprehensive TIP, in pursuit of R C W 3577010. The TIP is also updated annually. It must be consistent with the COPE plan, and it is a document that informs the city's budget, but is not itself a budget. And then the TIP is a requirement for grant funding eligibility. And really, the three main purposes of a TIP are to be really transparent with the public about how we intend to invest in our system in the near term, and also identify solutions to our system needs. There are various solutions needed. And provides an overview of how we plan to implement the projects and over the course of time. A quick note here before we get into some of the meat of this is that we did perform a SEPA review on this. We submitted the checklist to our DCD counterparts, that's the Department of Community Development, a couple weeks ago. They just today released a SEPA decision on it, and it was a determination of non-significance at DNS in pursuit to our city code listed there as SDC 2109030L1subD. There is no administrative process for that, actually. So I mentioned this earlier, that we make some clarifications on a few things that have changed, just so that council is aware going into it. And I apologize, this is a little bit wordy, but I felt it was kind of important to get it all out there. So these are both changes since the last workshop, as well as the publication of the agenda. So just keep that in mind. The first one there, and there was a quote comment about this earlier tonight, but we added a new project to identify the work that the Issaquah School District is doing to mitigate their impacts to the system, resulting from the development of the elementary school 17 and high school number four at the Providence Heights campus. We will talk about this a little bit more later, but you'll notice that there's funding shown in the other category in the TIP. And that is money that is coming from this West School District, so the city is not funding that project. That is a mitigation requirement of the district, but it will be improvements to the city's system. So we wanted to make sure we noted that. We thought that that was a good point, and it was oversight. So wanted to fix that oversight. The second one here is a pretty, pretty important one, and we have had some questions on this already. So just to reiterate, though, we are now showing about $16.9 million in the general fund in balance column. That is new. That was not shown in the last version of the revenue assumptions. So a couple of reasons for this. One is that we were directed not to consider new revenue streams at the last workshop, so that was an important piece of information. And also that a priority is to ensure that the TIP funds are still used on eligible projects. So this kind of creates a need where we need to complement the funding for TIP-eligible projects. And what we mean there is that only a few projects are eligible for the use of TIP funds, and that's traffic impact fee, by the way. Sorry, I forgot to clarify that. And of those couple of projects that are eligible to have TIP funds used, you can only use a certain portion of the total project costs. So you must make up the difference with other funds. And so general fund is used in the draft TIP, as you'll see later tonight, to make up that difference so that we can be eligible to use that TIP fund. It is certainly within the council's purview to choose not to use the general fund in balance. That is absolutely something that we can change, but there is considerations that it's kind of like a balancing act. You have to reduce the amount of projects very likely that you will be including on the TIP. So we can talk about that a little bit more later tonight, but just keep that in the back of your minds. And then continuing on the clarifications, we did want to note that prioritization was incorporated into the rank scoring using the methodology that was approved by council last week, the Resolution R 2022-952. The scoring is in the column of the TIP. However, it was not, we did not have enough time to re-rank it and reorder it in actual TIP, so that is something we'll work on by the time it comes back to council. So we tried to make it clear in the agenda bill, the ranking, but hopefully that wasn't too confusing and hopefully we can clarify that for our questions tonight. And then number four there is, there were some questions at the last workshop on the 26th of April about how, and just more so to verify the assumptions that we're using for the traffic impact fee, specifically just how we project out over the six-year window. And we did do some digging on that, and we worked with our counterparts in community development as well as finance to update and review those numbers. And these are actually based on permitting pipeline data. So this is hard data that we do have. This is assuming or looking at projects that are currently in the pipeline between, and I have to be really clear about this because it is really important, that it is projects that are between complete application on preliminary subdivision review all the way through final reporting of subdivision. So there's very kind of clear boundaries on what we're assuming in the permitting pipeline. And we broke it out by single-family and multifamily. So over the six-year window, the anticipated permitting, permit projects, sorry, permits for single-family residences, SFRs, would be averaging about 35 per year. Multifamily units is on average about 50 per year. And then what we do is we apply that to the cost per unit. So there is, as shown on the screen there in the table, a single-family unit is $14,204 per unit in traffic impact fee. Multifamily is about $8,719 per unit. And so when you do that math, you get about five, a little, little under $5.6 million of new TIP revenue in the six-year window. When you add that to existing TIP revenue that we already have, has not been spent as of early April, you get about $13.4 million. And there were a couple of questions on this that we can go over when we get to that point later in the presentation. But just wanted to make sure that we did close the loop with council, that we did verify this number, and wanted to make sure we verified. And the final clarification we have is just kind of hitting on the point that, a little bit more detail on how does the TIP work with, you know, funding commitments. how does the tip work with, you know, funding commitments for a project? So again, the tip informs the city's budget. The tip is not a budget. It helps us plan to budget. It is really, you know, kind of setting the stage for how we budget. And later this year, the council will consider the bio budget, and that will be a time where the rubber meets the road for capital funding. It is important to note that we do balance this tip. I know that's something that Jeff and Audrey and I have talked about in past presentations, that the difference between what we do now, what we've done in the past, is that we are showing, we're, we're showing the funding revenue sources that we can reasonably anticipate in the six-year window, and showing how that each project is balanced with those revenue sources. So it's kind of like a balloon. If you squeeze it in one area, it kind of pops out in another. So we want to make sure that it's all balanced and showing that there are no project costs that are shown that do not have a reasonably anticipated funding source. And that's, that's important, and this is a point that we've mentioned in the past, which is that according to our, our code, concurrency modeling is, is affected by the financial commitments to projects in the tip. So we do use this to help our modeling for concurrency. So if a project is assumed to be built in that six-year window, we will put it into the model. And then, and then obviously permitting is done through the output of the model. And then finally there on this, on the slide is, we do have the six-year window, but we also have identified projects for the years, out, the out-years from seven to 20, just to make sure that we're really clear about what we have on our radar, but do not fund or are not showing as being funded. That's a really important part, just in case, you know, sometimes priorities might change, grant opportunities might change, and allow us to kind of be a little bit more nimble and flexible with how we approach that. Okay, so now this is where kind of the meat of this whole thing starts. And I have a really hard-to-read image on this slide, but I'm going to shift over to a document that I'm going to kind of live navigate for council. And so give me a little bit of grace if I, I make, make some errors. But, so as, as you can see, can everyone see the PDF on the screen? Is that coming through time? I see some, okay.
That is not readable by any normal human eye, sorry.
Yep, totally fine, yeah. It's not, this is not meant to be readable. If you let me kind of explain here, I'll, I'll explain what's going on. So this big, big sheet is, is obviously huge. The city has a lot of needs in the system, and we're trying to capture all or most of those needs so that we can show how we're planning. So I'm going to start with the funding, the funding sources. So I'm going to zoom in. Zoom in here. So you're kind of on a ride with me today, so just buckle up, I guess. So we've talked a little bit about these revenue sources in the past, and we've gone through each, each anticipated source and shown what our assumptions are for each source. The general fund column here is what we talked about earlier, the $16.9 million that we're now showing. We've got the traffic impact fee column, the 11.9, which I'll, I'll get into this a little bit more. We have real estate excise tax, or otherwise known as REITs. And these are really high, high probability funding sources. These are sources that the city already has, is already collecting, and can use on capital projects. And then you get into funding sources that are maybe a little bit less high probability. So in this case, actually, the, the state has already appropriated $3 million to Lewis Thompson Road project. So this is funding that we do have, so we are showing that. And then we have grant programs here. So we have the King County Flood Control Board, grant assumption of just a little under $600,000. We are not showing State T I B, the Transportation Improvement Board. And then we are showing a little bit of funding, $3 million, under the P S R C federal grant. That is assuming that we get the grant that we applied for a couple of weeks ago for the Southeast 8 to 18 corridor, which is something that council directed us to apply for. So if that is awarded, we will confirm that, and if it's not, we will remove it from the spreadsheet. And we also have stormwater utility funding here, which Audrey will help with this explanation in a little bit. And then, of course, we have the other funding category, which I alluded to this earlier today, but the ISACW School District project that we just added today is classified in the other category. We, we are showing $8 million right now. We believe that's a relatively accurate number, but we are in the process of confirming that with the ISACW School District. So that will likely change by the time you see this next. So we wanted to lay out the funding sources that we're showing. And then, and then if you zoom out over here on this side of the, of the tip spreadsheet, you have the projects. So we have the revenues, and then we have the projects on the left. And this is, this is where we identify the solutions that we need in our system. And this is, this is how we're going to spend a lot of time in our discussion tonight. We've identified in orange the projects that we are proposing to be included using the revenue that I just showed you in that six-year window. This includes projects as well as programs. Not all of the programs are funded, and that will be a discussion point tonight, too. But it's something that we wanted to make sure we talked to council about. And each project is listed in the column to the left with its identifier number further to the left, and then a project description on the, in the middle right here. And this helps us understand what we're doing and where. Of course, each project has its costs associated with it. And then in these middle columns right here, we are showing when we are allocating funding to that project over the six-year window, the 2023 to 2028 window. And then over here, we have the six-year totals tallied up, as well as a cumulative, a running accumulation of the funding all the way down to the bottom. And then, of course, going back to the funding, now when we're in these columns right here, we're able to show where that funding is coming from. So the funding that is shown in these middle columns is not tied to a revenue source explicitly. It's just tied to the time. And then when you get to the revenue sources, you can see exactly how we've broken it out. So as you can see, just by way of example, the traffic impact fees really only have two projects that we can use funding for. And so this is a highly restricted source of funding. And then, and then, of course, in this case, which is this project right here is the ISACW Paddock Road corridor project, widening Phase One. This is eligible for TIP funding, and to make sure that we balance it out, we've shown funding coming from the general fund in the balance right here. And that helps us ensure that we're using TIP funding for TIP-eligible projects. So I'm going to zoom back out again and go down to the very bottom of the spreadsheet, which is where our potential cash flow item is. And this is where we can show how everything is balancing. This is a kind of a variation on the columns that you saw in the colors on the top right. We're showing them in table format, tallied by year, tallied by six-year total, and showing that the cash flow by year balances. As you can see down here, when this difference wrote, if something was out of balance, you would see the variation in this row right here. So tonight, if we do get input from council that we want to change projects, move projects around, we can try to do that on the fly, and you will probably see that this row right here will start shifting and showing dollar amounts in here. And it's been Jeff and Audrey and my job to make, make sure that it's balanced. Again, it's really important that it balances so that we can show that we are making those financial commitments and, you know, rooted in reality. So this is a, oops, sorry. This is kind of the high-level overview of the tip. We're going to, I have some slides that I'm going to shift back to that kind of walks us through the projects. And I'm going to do that right now. Okay. So we did talk just a moment ago about the revenues, and we wanted to show in table format the math behind all this. So we're, again, assuming about $16.9 in the general fund. Of course, these are rounded. These dollar figures, you know, we're, we're taking our best shot, so they are approximate. They are rounded. They, they may change in some cases by the time you see this again on the 7th of June. But these are our best guesses at predicting the future. So general fund at $16.9 million, you've got traffic impact fee at 11.9. In, in the tip column, we show that by using the permitting pipeline, we can reasonably assume that we'll get about $15.4 million in tip over the six-year window. But again, there's only two projects that we can use that funding for, and you can only use a certain portion of funding for each project. And that portion is just the growth-related portion. It is not the, kind of the existing deficiency-related portion of each project. And that's something that is kind of relatively inside baseball that you can kind of spend a lot of time on. But suffice it to say that you cannot, in, in most cases for projects, you cannot assume 100% of the project you paid with the tip. Again, these are restricted dollars. There are state laws around what we can do with this funding and how long we can keep the funding. It's important also about keeping the funding that we know that if we don't use the TIP funding, and it's basically a 10-year window minus a few exceptions, you have to actually pay the TIP funding back. You cannot hold it for more than allotted by state law. So again, highly restricted funding source. Real estate excise tax, every time a house is sold in the city, we get a portion of that, that sale. And over the course of the six-year window, we're assuming about $18 million. This goes up and down quite a bit. It varies. It does vary quite a bit year to year. So you, we're assuming an annualized $3 million on this. And it is my understanding that this is split between parks capital and transportation capital. And so our portion is that $3 million annually. Again, we've received a state appropriation of $3 million for the Lewis Thompson Road project. We are building that into our tip projections. We're also assuming $600,000 in King County flood reduction. And then again, the P S R C grant, $3 million on that if we are successful on the Southeast 8 to 18 corridor. Storm, stormwater utility fee, we are assuming 4.7 there. And then I mentioned this earlier, but the $8 million shown in the other funding is for the ISACW School District project. Again, we're verifying that, and it's something that will very likely change by the next time you see this. So all said, oh, sorry, I skipped.
Hey, Doug, are you taking questions during the presentation, or do you want us to hold off?
Let's hold off if we can. We have a lot of ground to cover, and, yeah, I think.
Yeah, please keep going. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And actually, I'm going to turn it over to Audrey for this side. So Audrey?
Sorry, I was trying to find the mute button. We're unmuted. Good evening, council. So we did want to go over a little bit, review with councils this evening, the stormwater utilities' contribution to transportation projects. So our last rate study that was completed and adopted in 2017 did highlight and recommend to one of its issue papers that the utility continue to fund a portion of the transportation projects, so that are stormwater components only. So the stormwater fund is restricted, enterprise fund has restrictions on it. However, there are components of some capital projects for the transportation that, that would be applicable to this funding. So currently, in our draft T S I F, we've only included projects that are flooding or flooding mitigation projects, so Lewis Thompson Road, 212th and Endeavor Elementary School flood section right there. However, we would like to ask you this evening if you would like us to go ahead and assume that utility should continue to fund the stormwater components of all eligible transportation projects in addition to those three. And we can circle back if you want some more information in terms of percentages. We do have a little bit of flexibility through our issue paper and how we can fund those, so we can actually use a budget-to-actual approach. Or oftentimes, cities will end up applying a percentage for planning purposes through that effort. So a lot of times, cities will select either 10, 15, or 20% of that project will be essentially contributed and allocated through the stormwater 438 fund. If you have questions on that, that feel free to ask. If not, we would just, I guess, like some guidance around if we should assume that as a revenue source for the T S I F.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, is there any reason why we wouldn't want the utility to continue to fund stormwater components?
Not necessarily. Just wanted to use to also be aware, you know, we are in the middle of a rate study for the utility, and we'll be circling back in July with a list of capital projects. So this funding source right now, we assume 20% allocation from the utility for transportation projects will be competing with a long list of stormwater capital projects as well. So just keeping that as mine as we move through the rate study on the stormwater side.
Great. Jeff, go ahead.
Audrey covered it. It's the, competing interests would be a reason why you would not want to. There's so many retrofit projects and storm stuff that there's just not enough money to go around, so we have to prioritize where best to fit it. And Audrey covered that, and we'll continue. So, thank you.
So is this your recommended list of, of what you think we should have towards transportation projects? Or have you guys not had a chance to do that reconciliation across the stormwater retrofit and these projects?
We will be coming back in July with a, in a study session to fully discuss all of the stormwater transportation, I'm sorry, stormwater capital projects with council. So for right now, we just wanted to have a placeholder, I guess, in the T S I F. And we can probably have some a little bit more accurate numbers when we come back with the rate study discussion.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? All right, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So all said, when you look at the reasonably anticipated revenue assumed in the six-year tip, we're looking at about $66.1 million. And that is different than what was in the Agenda Bill, and that is because of the $8 million that we now showing for the ISACW. So if you subtract the $8 million out, it's the 50, 50, what was that, 54, or?
58.
58, sorry, can't do math there. 58.1. Yes, thank you, Jeff. Okay, so moving on to the projects. So you saw a little bit of this on the spreadsheet that I was showing. Again, we're going to start with the orange projects, and those are the projects that we're proposing to be funded in that six-year window, or actually shown as having a financial commitment in that six-year window. Short of going over and reading all of these, I'm actually going to skip over to a map, which I think is much easier to, to review. And just be aware that we haven't had time to update this map to show the extent of that ISACW project, but that is something that we will make sure we do in the next round of this. But the circle projects are intersections. The longer lane projects are the widening projects. And then we wanted to also call out that in that list that you saw on this slide, there are programs and citywide projects that we listed in here. Those, those do not have sites necessarily. They have many sites, I guess, in some cases. But we wanted to make sure that we listed them here, so that they were still part of this proposed T S I F project list. But those programs include things like, you know, sidewalk projects, neighborhood C I P, street lighting, school zone safety improvements, ADA barrier removal, pavement preservation, et cetera. So this is the list, and of course, we can go back when the discussion starts and talk about specifics. The kind of next tier of projects that we're showing on the tip is our, what we're calling our long-range system completion projects. These are essentially the projects that are in the years seven through 20. They're outside the six-year window, so they are essentially unfunded in that six-year window. And these are the projects that, for whatever reason, we don't believe that will be getting to those in that six-year window for a variety of reasons. But we wanted to make sure that they are still on the tip, that they're still shown as something that's on our radar and shown, you know, I mentioned earlier that sometimes you need to be responsive to changing needs. Sometimes the priorities change. Sometimes grant opportunities come up, and you want to bump up a project. And that, that is totally fine, as long as we go through the process, we can update our tip. And we order if we need to. But it is a good idea to show these for transparency purposes and make sure that everyone knows what we intend to do after the long range. And these projects are shown on the map here. As you can see, Sahali is on this list. That is a big project that has been kind of focused for some time. We also have ISACW Paul City Road Phase Two, ISACW Paddock Road Phase Two, some intersection projects, as well as reconstruction of the road, of Beaver Lake Drive around Beaver Lake. The third component to the project list here is our regional projects. And these are really important for a variety of reasons. However, the city does not have direct control over these projects, and it makes it a little bit more complicated for making sure that these get across the finish line. Projects that fall into this category are things like the 202 Sahali Way Intersection, which has been studied by the state and however, has not been funded yet by the state. So we want to show that there. The Sound Transit North Seminole Park and Ride Lot, we left that on there, even though it got delayed. It is still something that is on the radar of Sound Transit. You know, it was delayed into 2045, which is, it sounds like a long ways away. But Sound Transit has also said, when they delayed the project, that if funding came available for those types of projects, that they would elevate it. So we want to make sure that we're not losing track of that and that it is on our list. And then we have a variety of projects that are outside the city limits. These are kind of where we, where we see a lot of choke points in the city. As you know, 202 Sahali is a choke point that's been there, been problematic for a while. We also have the ISACW Paddock Road and ISACW Paul City Road kind of intersection project there. So these are shown on the map. Again, the only one you actually see on the city limits is the South, North Seminole Park and Ride project, which is regional in nature because it serves the library and is a sound transit project. So just to summarize, this is what we're showing. The orange is the proposed projects to be included in that six-year window. And as you can see on this snapshot, which I know you can't read it, but you can kind of get the sense that we are showing the dollars by year, by fund. And so Um and so making sure that it all balances out. You'll see the highlighted eight million dollars here. Again, we have to verify that, that is Isipaw school district. Um and then just for transparency purposes, we had a map that showed everything altogether, uh so that you could kind of get a sense of where we're showing uh near-term and long-term projects and uh kind of the geograph geographical distribution of projects and investments. Um uh so yeah, I think that is actually all the slides we have. Uh sorry, all the slides we have um substantive. We do have a couple of slides about next steps and schedule. Uh but I don't know if uh council wants to take a break, or we could question and answer here. Uh we're kind of flexible, so it's up to council.
We did have a break right before you guys came on. I don't know if anyone has questions at this moment.
I can also finish the slides and then we can open the book.
Yeah, do you want Doug to finish the slides? Yeah, yeah, go for it.
Okay, okay, cool. It's not too far to get across the finish line. So um just so council is aware, we have a couple meetings planned. Uh we'll be back in two weeks on June seventh, uh where the council will open up a public hearing and take public testimony on the tip. And that will be very helpful in terms of informing the tip and changes to the tip. We will also at that time review changes that we will be making from tonight's conversation uh to improve the draft. Uh so you get kind of like a final-ish draft at that point. Um and then between June seventh and June fifth, we'll take uh you know, all that input on June seventh, improve the tip, come back on the fifth, and really ask uh the council to adopt at that point in time. Once we adopt, we will send it to the state. And um just a little bit more detail here is um essentially, you know, what I just said, but basically, once we adopt, we'll send it to Washington. That is a requirement. So um again, I'll leave it with council. Uh the purpose of tonight is to really confirm and or change our both our revenue and project assumptions. Uh so we are really excited to get some feedback tonight. And um I discussed this in more than a week. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, council. Who would like to go first? All right, I think it's councilmember Stewart first.
All right. Just wanted to give give everybody else a chance. Uh thank you for that presentation. This is such an important uh thing for us to cover. So um for the sixteen point nine million from the general fund, was that number just chosen to to like balance out so that we have a zero difference? Is that how that number was calculated?
Yeah, essentially, that is the case. It was um complementing the funding to make sure we were able to do, for instance, the tip projects and other projects that um that uh needed, for instance, sometimes for the grant, grant requirements, we need match. And so a lot of times, we wanna use the general fund for that.
Okay, perfect. Just wanted to to know i- if that was like a number that was backed into. Um you made a comment that there might, or there was a comment on one of the slides that there are TIF fees that are at risk of expiring. Um when and how much?
Yeah, uh Jeff, Jeff, go ahead, yeah.
Um the, there's a ten-year window. Oh, I looked it up today. Two thousand thirteen has the oldest money in it. And there's roughly about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and it needs to be spent by two thousand twenty-three. And then you go progressively every year after that. Um uh finance department keeps a table, and we can share that with the council at another time. Um there are opportunities to delay that due to, you know, for instance, COVID, some other factors that, you know, could come into play if the council wanted to take formal action. But uh there are the 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 first money ends would be the first money outs, if you will, if you don't use them, you lose them.
So how much money, other than the three hundred and fifty thousand in twenty thirteen, so we do we not have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of TIF projects in twenty twenty-three? TIF eligible projects?
Uh we may, we may. Uh the we're starting the design on on one of the projects up at uh Sahali Way and I get me with the intersection there. Uh two uh, yeah, two twenty-eighth, that has eligible dollars that could be spent on the design.
Which which project is that? Um can you give us the the project number or it was?
I I I don't have that table in front of me, Doug. Do you have that?
Yeah, I can I can bring it up. It's Sahali Way and twenty-eighth intersection. It's a failing intersection in the city. It is um.
Got it. TR fifty-three?
Uh project TR uh fifty-three, yes.
Okay, so if that project goes forward, would it, it looks like that's only planning to spend a hundred and sixty thousand in twenty twenty-three, so that would not take up the three hundred and fifty?
That's correct. That's correct.
So is, are there any other TIF, like, like, I'm, I'm really big on not giving money back?
Uh sorry, sorry.
So I I think we should definitely make sure we have projects on the work plan for now and twen- uh between now and twenty twenty-three that will use up all of that money. I would, so I guess, just not, not to belabor the point, but just as a, as an overall, when you come back to us with a final recommendation, that should be a a primary goal, is to make sure we're using up any TIF funds that are about to expire and that those projects are prioritized, and maybe you can kind of mark them somehow, so we know, these are ones we probably don't wanna mess with, cuz we really need to do these, so we don't give money back.
Right. And if you look on that, on that um uh table that Doug has provided, uh the column that has the traffic impact fee on the revenue side, there are two projects listed. Uh and there could be another, um and I'm gonna explain that. Um we do have the intersection project, starting with design, uh that could spend money towards it. And then we put on hold Isipaw Pine Lake Road. We got to about thirty percent of the project design and put that entire project on hold. Um and we've heard comments of equity on the south end versus the north end. We could start a, a um TIF eligible project on Sahali Way and use those funds in the north end as well. It's not shown as such, but it could be done. Uh so we'll need council guidance ultimately on which project to balance it to.
So for, uh if I look at this list, I only see two projects on the entire list that show as TIF eligible, TR fifty-three and TR oh two. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I'm pretty sure there's a longer list of projects, right? You're only showing us the ones you're recommending for the tip. Where's the rest? That was one of the questions I had. Can we get the rest of the list, so we know if we needed to swap something out? We know what what else is on our pick list.
Right. The 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 projects in green are the ones on the pick list that come from the comprehensive plan, the transportation element. And those are the longer-range projects, but we could advance one of those projects that are traffic uh fee eligible. It's about um, I don't remember the number. It's in the neighborhood of seventy-five percent. The Sahali Way projects are eligible. Um but again, then we would need to show how we're gonna balance those projects going forward, so.
So um is, so this one page is the whole list of the whole universe of projects? Cuz I seem to recall from the past that we had like pages and pages of projects.
Uh we did not include projects from the transportation master plan, as that was not an adopted plan by the council. We were only using the comprehensive plan, the transportation element at this time, cuz that is what is adopted. That is what is in the plan itself, and the state uh state guidelines um require us to uh develop a transportation improvement plan that is consistent with our comprehensive plan.
Okay. All right, but it, so it does look, and the green projects, it does look like there are a few more um
Right.
TIF eligible. So again, I would say we should definitely make sure we don't give money back. Uh why? Oh, I already got that. Um what about ARPA funding? Is that something that we can use towards road projects? Or is that already, cuz I thought we had about four point seven point point six million of ARPA funds that we still could use for various projects? Or do we already, have we already like spent that three times over?
I'll defer to the interim city manager for that.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh thank you, councilmember. Um we do have those ARPA funds are still, we have not designated those yet. I think part of that is a broader conversation with council about how they wanna use those funds. As we go into the biennial budget, one of the things we were waiting for is direction from the federal level about what we could use the funds for, uh so that we do not put ourselves in a position to have to pay them back. Uh and then um as part of the broader biennial budget process, there are a lot of competing needs, as Jeff was pointing out, for uh for um capital dollars across um more than just a transportation improvement plan. So um yes, they're available, but there's also, as you're pointing out, they could be used three times over or more.
Okay, no worries. Um really quickly on the um revenue assumptions. I I asked the question, and I didn't understand the answer. You're only assuming three million a year in REIT. Uh if I went back and looked at twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and we were more than three million a year for uh transportation projects for REIT, and the budgeted amount for twenty twenty-two is higher than that. So why are we only assuming three million a year for REIT?
We had worked with finance on that, and one of the things that um uh sorry, I'm gonna navigate to a slide here real quickly in one moment. So yes, we worked with finance on that, and uh you're right that sometimes the funding is higher, sometimes it's lower. It fluctuates pretty wildly, actually. And so if you look at back ten years, three, three million dollars is the um is the annual average, so.
When was the last time it was less than three million? Cuz I'm guessing that was back when my house was worth half of what it is today, or a quarter.
We're in the slide. Uh let's see, this is something that we had prepared um.
Yeah, so it's been higher than three million since twenty sixteen. I mean, it's just something to consider. I think we could maybe, you know, I don't know if we have the capacity to do more projects, but I feel like we're severely underestimating that revenue source.
Uh the the other thing I'll add in there is, again, going to competing interests citywide. Um we have locked in at three million with the understanding that the council may choose to use a portion of the REIT dollars towards facility projects. Uh that's a possibility. And so for us to claim more dollars at this time and then have to unwind that if the council chose to take a different direction, there's also a reason that the number is sitting at three million versus three and a half or something a little bit larger. So we wanted to be conservative and recognize that there are other competing needs throughout the city, not just transportation, that might need to be addressed. Hopefully that helps.
Yeah, um and then I know I asked about the the grant funding, and I guess you said there was a a decision made not to assume any grants we haven't already applied for?
I'll defer to the council on that.
Okay.
I I, yes, that was the, that was the conservative direction given to us. A couple of things. Don't assume grants that you might could get, cuz we had, we'd broken this up into high probability, median probability, and fair probability, or good. And the council said, no, let's not go down the good and fair. Let's just go with what you really know. And so we do, we either have application for funding, or we've received funding. So we did that. And then the council told us also, please don't add new revenue sources at this time, i.e. utility taxes, um uh traffic in uh traffic uh benefit districts and some other tools that are available, because those might be used for operational. Who knows what the council wants to use those for in the future? And so in part, the sixteen point nine, when we tried to balance it, cuz you also told us, spend those traffic impact fees. What was left is the one-time monies that are left over in the Indian Fund balance would need to be used to balance, you know, that one big project.
Okay, so if we did get more grants, we would just put it back into the general fund. Okay. Cuz I feel like assuming no grants in like years four, you know, three through six is a probably not a great assumption. All right, um that was it for my, oh, the other one for the revenue assumptions is and I asked about this. I think you said you're gonna recalculate it, is the number of multifamily units of fifty
No, we're not.
per year? That, I don't think that pencils in with even what's in the pipeline, but I'm not sure.
According to, yeah, go ahead, Doug.
Oh, sorry, Doug. Um that that is our pipeline. Now, those are our pipeline numbers. Um we uh work with DCD on those, and there are some really clear parameters on that, which is um complete application and the preliminary review process all the way through final recording of a plat. Um so that captures everything in the six-year window, and uh those are actually pretty hard numbers.
But that's just what's, so if somebody came in tomorrow, those numbers would go up?
Right. Um yeah, and we would, we we could adjust if we need to, but uh those are what we're assuming. Cuz there's also a couple of external factors going on, which is that impact fees are paid. Uh it, again, some inside baseball here, but impact fees are paid in varying different points in the process, depending on the type of application and the developer, et cetera. There are things that the state allows, uh calls uh impact fee deferrals. Uh so a developer developer can choose to defer it. Uh there are all kinds of external market factors going on, where sometimes projects get started and they stall out. Um you know, a whole bunch of things. So we're trying to do uh the best with the data that we have. And the best data we have right now is fifty fifty MFR multifamily residential units um annualized uh over the six years, and then thirty-five multifamily residential.
Okay, all right. Um and then the only other big question I had was um around, and I think a number of people have asked about this, the pavement preservation, street reconstruction of a million a year. That seems kind of high. I know we have like the the worst street in Summerville that we're working on right now, but won't most of the other ones be handled through our um overlay project?
Doug, if I may?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, I did send out to the city council today a clip from a a spreadsheet that we sent out to the council last fall regarding this issue. And so for the newbies, you hadn't seen that, but there are twenty-some streets that are forty-five or thirty, that the score of forty-five or thirty or worse in the city system. And those streets are at risk of becoming another Shore Lane. So those that have the opportunity to go and visit Shore Lane, um I I know that Deputy Mayor Clark, you and I had a conversation about that, and then opportunity to go out and witness that street. We have many streets in the city that are beginning to approach that. And so it was our recommendation to come with a new capital program that we begin to address those and get those failing streets back into normal operating mode. Um because if you don't, you're gonna pay more. You're gonna pay more due to failing. So we want to, we want to suggest addressing those sooner than later. And that is a a bucket of money that's different than the operating annual payment program. So it is a different thing. One is operating for overlays, and one is capital for road reconstruction.
So these are, these are roads that the overlay won't work anymore, so we have
That's correct.
We have, okay. So shouldn't those roads just be on here as projects and not just a bucket? Cuz if they need to be fixed, don't they just need to be called out?
Uh we, we haven't had the opportunity to come back to council with the specifics of the projects, what level of funding. Um the spreadsheet that I sent out today shows in the neighborhood of a mil- um six million dollars to do most of those projects. Of course, there's inflation, and it isn't a complete project cost, so we have not had the opportunity to do full briefing with the council. So we put a placeholder in there of a million dollars annually in the tip. Of course, we can change that by the time we get to the hearing, but at least it's a placeholder for discussion.
Okay, great. And then I won't belabor any of the projects or the the priorities of them, but I did ask if we could get with this list of projects, the prioritization math that you did, so we can kind of see the ones that are on the margin. So if we do need to start playing a little bit of a shell game with TIF funds or something like that, it'd be great to see what that came out. Is that something you contend to us?
Uh yeah, we'll, yeah, we do have that.
Thanks.
And and we do plan, and another piece of the puzzle here is, we do plan to come back to the council uh sooner than later on the traffic impact fee program. We had originally were holding off doing an update subject to the outcome of the BLOOMA and the Code and Comp Plan amendments, cuz those would have generated, you know, alternative four generated almost three hundred and eighty million dollars worth of improvements and deficiencies. Now that that's come off the table, uh the list of of TIF eligible project goes back to two thousand and fourteen. And it is that list of projects that's in the comprehensive plan that needs to be reevaluated to see, can we make any adjustments? We may not be able to make any adjustments regardless. So um we do need to come back to the council and see what what we can do with the tip.
Great. And I know interim city manager, you had a a couple of things. I don't know if you wanna go. Sorry.
Uh really quickly, and then I will defer to councilmember Howe. Um I just wanna reiterate. The team is doing a great job, and we're we're getting down into the weeds a little bit more. I just wanna remind council that because this is a planning document, that this allows us to update as we know more. Uh if we get grants in, we can update the plan. Um this, this can be updated as we go, as opposed to something that's more substantive, that once we lock it in, it's there for a few years. So again, this is a, I would call this, and Doug and Jeff can kick me under the proverbial table if I'm going a little far here, but it's more of a living document that allows us to to help prioritize and give the team direction on how to move forward. But essentially upfront with our biennial budget process to say, what are we gonna spend money on? Can we spend money? And what are we gonna spend it on coming up here? And then how do we plan for moving forward? And so um these are all great questions. I just wanna remind council that we do have more than one bite of the apple as we get more, as we learn more, as the projects Jeff was describing, if we get more farther down the road, we can start to call those out differently. So there's a lot of options for council as we move forward in this process.
Scott, can I add to that? Yeah, um Scott's at- Scott, can I add to that? Yeah, Scott's absolutely right, that we can update this as many times as we want. The only thing I would add is that there's a process step, which is that you must hold a public hearing before you read the TIF. So just wanted to clarify this for
And just real quick, before Karen Howe goes, I'm sorry, Karen, but I do want to add, on behalf of Mayor Mao Chow, while it is a planning document, it does create an obligation of intent to do something with your first two years really being your budget. You know, it informs the budget for the first two years, ideally. Again, it can change. You can, you know, we get the budget, you can swipe it off and say no, technically. But it is meant to obligate and inform. So I just wanted to do that. Now, back to Kaylee to give it to Karen.
Yeah. Would anyone else like to go before? Just kidding. Councilmember Howe?
And here I was going to compliment you guys. Jeez. And say that I completely agreed, actually, with conservative numbers. Thank you for taking to heart everything that we'd said in a prior meeting about being conservative with the numbers. Because we do know that there are going to be cost overruns that are unanticipated, that are going to nail us at some point. My question actually has to do a bit with the future. How do we maximize the opportunity with the public hearing, so that you're able to get the feedback and the connection to residents that you need in order to feel like you've got input that's meaningful and useful?
That's a great question. So the reason why we're holding it on the 7th is that it does give us time to adjust and rerun the numbers, rebalance it. So I do feel comfortable that we do have time to incorporate everything. I think the important thing that we are always seeking from council is concurrence, in the sense of majority concurrence. So while the public input is excellent and needed in this, we still do want council to be telling us their concurrence on all the changes we're making to the TIF. So that is the kind of additional point to that. But I do think by holding the public hearing, we've already been receiving some emails and commentary, and there's actually been a lot of interest in the TIF this year. I've sent it out personally to a few people who have requested it via the notification they got. So yeah, absolutely. It's already in progress. So that's the good thing, is that, you know, tonight we heard a lot of input. And just by way of example, you know, we heard that the SPOS District Project was missing from the TIF, and we added that. Granted, it was on the fly, so we have, you know, some rebalancing we need to do on that in terms of verifying the numbers. But we do take the public input very seriously. And, but also, we want to make sure that we have constant concurrence on the changes.
Thank you.
I would also, I would also offer, Councilmember Howe, while the public may want things, the hard part is, is, and we can identify what they want, the policy guidance comes from the council to tell us what you can afford or willing to afford. And so we don't ask that question of the public necessarily. What are you, you know, how are you willing to pay for it, other than what is here on the document as proposed? We're showing you a proposed plan that is balanced, that can be changed. But if we want new things, or different things, or more things, the challenge is going to be, is where does the money come from? Does it come from taking away something, or adding something, i.e. revenues or taking away projects? We're dealing with that issue right now, just on the traffic impact fee project. We have two, and maybe a third. You know, how do we balance that? And how do we get that, you know, input from the community? I don't know that they get that granular with it. But we do take their input. And again, we'll be coming back to say, how do we, council, what's your, what's your comfort level for balancing the revenue?
Well, and you guys did such a great job, I thought, with the way that you constructed your visual argument over 2012, when you were giving options to residents. And I think a little bit maybe to Councilmember Stewart's point, when she was talking about a map with everything on it and prioritized, and maybe with price tags attached too, so that we understand, so that we, as a collective, you know, not separate, councilmember resident, but as a collective, understand, these are the priorities, these are what, what we think are important, and for safety reasons, and actually listing why these are first. I mean, a big piece I think that's missing for people is, well, why did you do that? The why part. And that's on us. I think that's on the council, to help, to provide that why, and organize in a way that it's digestible by people.
One of the things that we've tried to do is, in the table of information, to the very far left, is some qualifier information about the projects. But really, to start off with, the list of the projects, the first three are level of service projects. These are the intersection projects that must be done, right? And then the school district project is in there because that's imminent, at least we believe it to be the case. And then the next project on the list is ADA. That's a federal mandate. You've already committed to do that. It's actually a new program since the Capitol Facilities Plan was adopted, that the council two years ago said, yep, we need to do that. And so we have the wise for each one of those projects, and then we run out of money, you know, pretty quickly. So that, that's what we're dealing with. And every one of those projects has got a story as to why it's on there. And we'll endeavor to tell that story when we make the presentation, or through the presentation materials. That's our job to attempt to do so. So hopefully that helps.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Jeff, for answering our questions via email earlier today. That was really quick turnaround. I just had one more question, and that is regarding the BLOMA EIS. Now that we're not implementing V over C, did that change the order of the road projects? Like, were they reordered in any way? Or maybe you answered it, and I just didn't hear.
Doug, you want to take a stab, or would you like me to? Go ahead.
Yeah, I can take a stab. Thank you, Councilmember Lamb. Good question. So one of the things that we had been doing, and actually it digs back to our TIF effort last year, when BLOMA, the BLOMA EIS was kind of just in the middle of that process, we decided to withhold those projects on the EIS, pending the process. We wanted the process to play out first, go through the EIS, issue the final EIS. And then after that, after we made the Code and Comp Plan amendments, we would, we had committed to putting those projects into the TIF at that time. We wanted to make sure they were, you know, real projects that we're pursuing based on a standard that was adopted. So because the standards were not adopted, we do not have those projects, we did not have those projects on there. We were, I don't know if you recall from earlier conversations in this, but we wanted to do kind of a two-part process, where we had done the TIF based on the standards in place today. And then once the EIS and V over C standards were adopted, we would updated the TIF to include those projects. So because we did it that way, we don't have to make changes now, and those projects were not in the list already. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Looks like Jeff has something additional to add.
If Councilmember Lamb is happy with your answer, I'll leave it at that.
Well, so I do see like Sahali Way. I know there was like the widening to five lanes, and I still see that on there. So maybe there's some clarity there.
Yeah, let me help with that.
Yeah, go ahead.
The answer that I was going to help add to that was, is that if we were coming back with the, with the Code and Comp Plan and the Alternative Four projects, we would have also come with a major financing plan, and a timeframe for that financing plan, and an opportunity to reevaluate each of the corridors by standards, to see how much we could actually build and need to build. We're not doing those things now, because we've, we've, you know, revoked, you know, that piece of work. So the Sahali projects are still on there, because they are necessary system completion projects that are in the current comp plan. So again, we have a need to update the comprehensive plan. The last one was 2015. Those projects are on those lists, and that's our foundation at the moment.
Got it. Thank you.
You bet.
All right. Councilmember Moran?
Okay. I have got, I think I've got it narrowed down to just a few. So without the V over C, I've got questions on the Issaquah Falls City Road, and also the Issaquah Pine Lake Road. I would understand the intersection that is by the fire station and the school. Yeah, the roundabout.
You want me to speak to that one first?
You take your pick.
The, we throw, we are suggesting a study, a restudy, or an additional study of the intersection of Issaquah Pine Lake Road and 32nd, which is north of the fire station and south of the school, based on our assessment of school back in session, and the incredible amount of traffic that happens at peaking times. While the roundabout was studied and was going to be implemented as a part of the Issaquah Pine Lake Road Corridor Project, Phase One, we're not, we were not certain if that project is going forward and when. However, with the school backup happening in the morning and in the evening, we believe it's imperative to take a look at doing a signalized roundabout, whereby during peak times, or when there's a call for an emergency vehicle, that the legs of the approaches can be stopped, so that the fire vehicle can get through the intersection more safely, more effectively. So we want to study that. It's a common thing now to signalize roundabouts for peaking operations, such as schools, such as freeway operations. Washdott's got several of them in play. If you go to Carmel, Indiana, the roundabout capital of the world online, they have over 210 roundabouts in their community. And many of them, they are doing signalized roundabouts to deal with the peak. Putting in a signal for $500,000 or $1 million is a whole lot cheaper than ripping out that entire intersection, and putting it back to a signal for marginal, you know, gain. Because a roundabout is much more safer at any time, other than peaking, than a signal is. So anyway, that's the purpose of that, is to, we'd like to study that and see what the results are, and what could be implemented sooner than later, as a possibility.
Okay. And then the Issaquah Falls City, is that road, with taking away the V over C, that road shouldn't be failing?
That's correct. If you, Issaquah Falls City Road, Phase One, and Two was a corridor project, those do not need to go forward now, because we've suspended or revoked, whatever the terminology is. And so therefore, but we had, we've collected traffic impact fees associated with it. And so if we're not going to spend our traffic impact fee dollars on that project, which is still eligible based on the current 2014 study, then we would need to probably move that to a Sahali project, which is eligible for traffic impact fees, and begin starting, you know, to start that. So you got trade-offs.
Right.
Trade-offs. And keep in mind, it seems like every one of those corridors are 20 to 30 million dollars, you know, a half mile. And Sahali Way was last listed nearly $100 million. So if we're going to talk about Sahali Way, and want to advance that as a project, which segment, right? Because I don't think you want to commit right up front $25 million of general fund money unless you want to raise new taxes or new fees to offset the traffic impact fees that need to be spent with that. So again, just, these are, these are variables.
Okay. Yeah. Because I, I mean, I don't think there was ever, I've never seen a design for five lanes that I, I mean, I don't think I've ever seen designed for five lanes. So, but I know that there was different ideas on how to make that traffic flow. Much better taking it to two, or two.
So what could happen is, is that the city, if they wanted to, this goes to Councilmember Stewart's question, let's not leave any money on the table. We could do a corridor reassessment, and assuming V over C is not on the table anymore. But what should the court, what should the system completion for 228th and Sahali be without V over C? That is what I believe to be a traffic impact fee eligible project at this time, and we should, you know, possibly consider doing that.
And does that, would that include like flexible design standards and that sort of thing?
Yeah. We'd look at the whole corridor, and then break it up into bite-sized achievable pieces. It's a complete streets approach. But maybe we do, you know, kind of like Lewis Thompson wrote, we have it, we have a city standard that says, this is what we're supposed to do. But what do we want to do? What do we need to do? What's the best thing at what location? For safety reasons, for transit, for, you know, pedestrians, all those kinds of things. And it may be a much lesser project than $100 million. I can't answer that right now, but that's, that's a plausibility.
Okay. And then I've got two other questions. The other question I have is, in taking away the V over C, we've got, and just having, we're back to the intersection level of service, on two of our main commute roads on the north end, we have no way to measure traffic. So now we're out of, we're out of what the GMA says to do, because we're supposed to measure it. So how are we going to do that?
That is a great question. And I today do not have an answer, because the council has taken direction. And we would need to talk with our consultants on how best to come back with a strategy or a series of possible solutions. But tonight, we don't have an answer to that specific question.
So we, we, so we canceled a way to get answers, but yet we went forward with, I'm just trying in my mind to figure out, we don't have an answer on how we're going to, how we're going to be in compliance with the GMA on that. Okay. So, okay.
Doug, did I miss anything in that answer? Maybe you have some more that you could add for Councilmember Moran?
Yeah. I'd like to just clarify, is the question more that we, we track those intersections in those choke points? Is that, is that the question? Or is it, because you're saying measuring, measuring traffic?
Yeah. So we need to be, we need to be measuring, according to the GMA, we need to be measuring the traffic on those roads. And I don't know how we're going to do it, if we're going to be doing level of service, solely level of service, because we don't have intersections on those roadways. So there's got to be another way that we're going to have to come up with to measure the traffic on those roadways. Because those are two very important roadways that we have commuters take. And frankly, those are exits out of the north end in an emergency. So we need to know what that traffic is.
Yeah. So I'm not a modeler, but I have spoken with our modeling team. And so those intersections are part of our model, and we do track those. But when you're talking about the capacity for V over C, without that standard, we do not assess those for pass fail, if that makes sense. And those are, intersections are outside of the city boundaries. So, you know, the E6 Mamish Parkway and 202 is Redmond, and 202 Sahali is state slash King County. So, you know, those, that plays into it as well. But those intersections are modeled as part of it. They are included in our model.
Right. So, but they, it still doesn't tell us, it doesn't answer our question, basically. It doesn't, we're not measuring it. We're not, we're not able to keep track of what those numbers are. We're not able to measure them as we do and keep track of the numbers on the other roadways.
Other than doing, you know, mid-segment traffic counts, and then assessing what that's telling us, again, I would want to bring our traffic consultant from Victor in, and have a dialogue and discussion about what could we do? You know, now that we've taken V over C away, what are, you know, plausible solutions? And that just, because this action happened just within the last three or four weeks, we're not, we've not had a chance to meet with Victor, or bring him to the table to begin this dialogue. But your point is well taken.
Okay. And then the other thing is, one of the things that I didn't see us get this time, and I've tried to bring in the last three years that I had, is I've always seen a list of our sidewalk priorities. So for, so, you know, we would have, this is how much we're going to do, and here's our list of where we are on our sidewalk priorities. And my concern with that is, is that if we're going to start, you know, willy-nilly putting sidewalks where we kind of want to put them, versus where we probably should put them, which is around the schools and that sort of thing, then we're probably not utilizing the fund to the best that we should be, as far as safety and best for the citizens. So I'm just wondering, what happened, or do we still have, or are we still doing it that way? Or what's going on with the sidewalk fund and list that had been originated?
I can take a stab at that. And Jeff, you know, you can jump in if you need to. But yeah, sidewalk priorities is something that we don't currently have. We did take a stab at that under the draft TNP, but that was not adopted. So in the absence of something, you know, prioritized like that, we do not have a list today that is prioritized. But that's something that we want to work on, especially as we undertake the 2024 Comp Plan update. I think that is something that we can build into that, and should build into that. But yeah, I don't know. Jeff, do you want to add to that?
No, I think you hit the nail on the head, is we, we attempted it under the TNP, and then we put the, this tip on hold for the past two years or three years. And consequently, we looked at one project to fill a gap, which was Inglewood Hill Road between 213th and the roundabout. That's a project That's a project that we started, so to speak, although given what we, the decision made on, on Louis Thompson Road to add $3 million, I'm, you know, we need to figure out, okay, now where's the money going to come from to do sidewalk projects? You know, because they run in the neighborhood now $750,000 or more, depending upon the length of the project. So, but we do not have a list at this point in time. We have a program, and we'll come back with the council to figure out that, but we don't have invested or defined today the way that you're thinking about it, at least to my understanding.
Okay. So my concern with that is that in our comp plan, you know, one of the things that we talk about is that, you know, our schools and safe walking routes and that sort of thing. Then if we're going to ask kids to walk to school, then we had better make it safe for them to walk to school. So that is why it has always been the school, you know, walking routes were always the number one priority for sidewalks. So I'm, I, at least I feel very strong about the fact that, you know, especially when I hear that we've got principals saying it's not safe for you to walk someplace, that we really need to go, you know, back to, you know, draw that circle around that school and make sure that those are in place first before we start putting stuff other places.
One thing I'll add, it's a great point.
Except in front of my neighborhood, because I want my sidewalk, but never mind that.
But let me add, because it sparked a thought there. We have been short, short-staffed. We, in our public works department, are four vacancies that are open. And so consequently, we've also not had the ability to do the assessment that you're talking about. I firmly believe that the city ought to do a system completion program, and one of the elements of that is starting with your schools and doing a mile radius out, every one of them, and figuring out where the gaps are for either bike lanes and/or sidewalks. But I've had to rebuild our, our traffic division with the exception of one person when I came on board. They all left, and then we spent a year and a half trying to rebuild that department. And I'm still down one person to be able to take on that particular, develop that. Linda, our traffic manager, is developing plans and putting them on the shelf for us, but she needs staffing and resources to help get there, and we're just, we're missing that. We plan to do it, but we're just, we don't have it to that level at this point in time.
Okay. Well, you've done a great job, by the way. Okay. I think that, I think that's all I have for now, but thank you.
All right. Councilmember Trine?
So Jeff, keep you on the hot seat here for just a second. In system completions, I agree with the direction that Karen Moran was talking about with the schools, about sidewalks, the one-mile distance. Definitely want to encourage the bike lanes as well, though, and so I'll just double emphasize that. When you talk about system completions, and I look at the big dollars for Sahali Way as an example, since that, those projects are going to be on the, on the TCIP because of concurrency issues. Is Sahali, or 202 and Sahali, is that a system completion project?
In my opinion, you know, and Doug, maybe you can, you know, pipe in after me here. As you know, when Sahali, excuse me, when Mamish was incorporated, they took over the county infrastructure, and the county built many, if not most, of all the streets to a rural standard.
Correct.
I.e., we don't have curb gutters, sidewalk, and bike lanes on most of our arterials. And it's been a constant battle for the city for the past 20 years as we've grown up to try to figure out how to do that. And the city's taken some great steps. 228th, you know, in the heart of the city is a beautiful project, you know, that got built. It's got a, you know, a shared bike lane on one side and, you know, buffered, you know, bikeways and all those kinds of things, and the city has taken those steps. Going to your point, for projects that are slightly outside of the city, like SR 202 and Sahali Way, it is a critical project to the city of Mamish, because all of us have to drive through it, even though it's technically outside our organs, you know, our jurisdiction. To solve that problem, it will require bold leadership by the city to maybe become the leader of that project through interlocal agreements to inspire that project to go forward. When I think of system completion, I'm thinking one of two strategies. Start on your end, your choke points, and work your way in, i.e., you've got the north end and the south end. Victor's talked about those, our traffic engineer, that need to be fixed, and then work your way in, so to speak, or start at the heart of the city and work your way out. I, I think that the bulk of the citizens of Mamish would prefer to get those two choke points fixed and fixed as soon as possible. Challenge is, it's outside of the city. How do you inspire King County and/or Washdott to, to fix those? Well, you, you take them over. You, you tell, you bring them to the table and say, we'll bring money to the table, we'll bring the consultants, just work with us to get there. And then all of a sudden, things start to happen. I say that from a voice of experience because we did that in Linwood in a corridor project in Snohomish County. But anyway, I digress on that component.
So the second thing then, because I, I look at it on multiple levels.
Yep.
Regionally, I mean, 2024, light rail's coming into Redmond. So why we're not jumping, okay, my opinion is, I think we, if, if system completion is the way we go for this TCIP, then in 2024, light rail, and if I want to reduce congestion or remove cars from the roadway, then hooking up to light rail, that, that intersection may solve a myriad of challenges just by improving the, that signal down there at the bottom of the hill. So my, my direction would be that that would be the starting point. And then I would say, then if you move your map down a little bit, is, is that bottom project, that TR, you can call it TR 03 and TR 27, that, that's the south end. So at some point here, 2035, 2041, light rail's coming to Isicuaa. And so there's, there's your second one. Maybe it's not in this next six years, but that puts us at 2028. So why don't we get ahead of the game for the first time instead of being behind the game and start working that problem there? Because our other challenge is this, and I'm thankful for the $8 million from the school district, but the other challenge is this 228, Southeast 43rd, and clearly, at least in, depending on how they allow this, where the students are going to come from to go to those schools, that Isicuaa, that Isicuaa-Pine Lake intersection becomes a mess, right? I mean, you got to fix it. So again, then why, why would we be behind the eight ball again? Why don't we be proactive and, and work that intersection? Because what you're doing then by doing even those three projects or working on these three, I call them the choke points, these three exit points off of the city, you literally are helping all the residents of Mamish. So, okay, off my soapbox, the last question is, East Lake Mamish Parkway, what, what is, what is the solution? Because there's our other avenues of getting people in and out of the city, moving people. How do we measure that?
Doug, you want to take a stab, or you'd like me to?
Sure, I can take a stab. So the Parkway is obviously very problematic for myriad reasons, and it's something that we did look at in the EIS. I know that that's, you know, not something we're currently pursuing, but the EIS did look into that. And one of the problems that you run into with the Parkway is if you improve the Parkway, it effectively attracts more traffic. So if you build it, it will come, that kind of idea. And it is currently a minor arterial in the city. So the idea behind Alternative 4, which, you know, not to rehash a lot of the history, but the idea behind Alternative 4 in the EIS was that we would build the city's principal arterials to the standard, the principal arterial standard, and that would attract traffic to the, the roads that were classified to carry the heaviest volumes at the peak hour. And, and in theory, that would take traffic off of the East Lake Mamish Parkway. That, that obviously has a lot of cost behind it, but it does kind of get at that system completion idea, which I know you were asking me about a few minutes ago, which, you know, you're kind of taking the rural roads, those roads that were built by the county years ago, and making them more urban in nature and accommodating the volumes that we do see, which are essentially urban volumes. And so that was really the trick there with Parkway is it's a tough one, and it's extremely costly. Any project you do on the Parkway, not only just for geological reasons and, you know, landslide hazards and wetlands and creeks and wildlife and all the stuff that's adjacent to the Parkway, you know, the cost of the property there, right-of-way acquisition for a linear project of that nature is astronomically expensive. And so the Parkway is a really tricky one for the city. So I think, you know, going back to EIS, I think that's why Alternative 4 resonated with the council, in my opinion, you know, again, going back to December, so memory is a little bit hazy, but I do think the idea of building your roads to the standards that they are supposed to be, to draw the traffic to the area where the, the traffic is meant to be, was appealing. So that, that was kind of the trick there, the rod, I guess.
The other thing that I would add in terms of solution to Councilmember Trine's question is if we're not going to build to our standards, then the next level of, of management is access management. What I mean by access management, what's causing congestion are the left turners to their driveways, you know, in the corridor. We talked about this last year with Isicuaa Falls City Road Phase Two. The challenge with that project is we could build it to standard as it was multi-millions of dollars, or we could look at doing access management. What that means is, is you cut off the left turn, but you put roundabouts at strategic locations in the corridor. So yes, you have to go past your house and maybe a quarter of a mile to half a mile, then you have a U-turn to come back to make that work. It's a safe, effective way of managing access, and you're not building out the infrastructure to the, you know, to the degree. But we would have to study that. Where and how could we do that versus, you know, the standard? I think, I think the Parkway is a good candidate for that. I think Isicuaa Falls City Road Phase Two is a, and going out Dothe Hill Road is a candidate for that, because your, your congestion comes from people turning left. Now, they're, they're stopping and trying to get home, or they're trying to get out of their driveway, you know, and waiting for that gap. So to answer your question, some more studies, but you're, if you're not going to build it to standard, then let's look at access management as your next tool.
And last thing is the stormwater projects. Yeah, let's, I'm, I'll go on those. The Dothe Hill section there and the one by the elementary school and the, I'm drawing a blank where the other one is.
That's 212 between.
Yeah, 212. So, thank you. Thank you for all you guys' work.
All right. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. One question, and, and I don't know if this is for you, Jeff, or maybe you, Scott, is as we're working on the comp plan update, when is the right time to do the TNP? Do we need to get back on and get the TNP done now? Or can we do it, can we give direction to do that as part of the comp plan update? Because what I hear, all of this stuff, everything I keep hearing is we need the TNP. And if only we had the TNP, we'd know how to do the system completion. We would, you know, we would know what studies to go do. We'd even know what priority order to work on it in. We'd know how to prioritize our sidewalk gap projects, those types of things. So what's the best way for us to help you guys help us?
Jeff has a good stump speech on this one, so I'm going to turn it over to him.
Excellent.
Really quickly, let him take this one on.
Well, I'm going to go back to, I disagree that we need a TNP at the moment. I think it, not knowing what's going to come out of the comp plan over the next two years, I would not want to invest yet money into updating a TNP until I knew what, what was going to come out of or be a part of the comprehensive plan update. So I would suggest that we postpone, although we could start and restart again. The challenge with the TNP, as I understood it for not going forward, is it was somewhat of a wish list, and it was somewhat of a, a, I mean, I heard different things about it from different people.
Yeah, let's not rehash history. Let's figure out what we need to do going forward.
Right. But what we do, what I believe we need to do is a system completion approach and, and put that into our transportation element going forward and focus our energies on that as opposed to trying to unravel or redo a TNP that the council chose not to want to go forward with. But if the council chooses to want to go forward with the TNP, then we, you know, I hadn't contemplated that actually as being a possibility to be straight up with you. And so that's new territory for me to want to consider at this point in time. But I think a system completion approach for the transportation element is the right approach to do, and we can pick off four or five components of that, do the assessments associated with that.
And does that address all of the multimodal and all of the other parts as well? And transit?
I believe, I, if we're going to build out our system, then yes, I believe it does that.
Okay. And then that leads me to the other question, Scott, is I know you guys are working on it, but when will we see the information about the transit? Because I think that has a huge impact on which projects we prioritize here.
Doug, you want to, well, go ahead, Scott.
No, I was just going to say, I know Doug has an update on this, and I know that there's a information in the, in the waiting. So Doug?
Yeah. So this one has been on my list to do for a little while now. We have done, made some progress, and it kind of, you know, there's the intersection with the Bloom EIS work, which we are coming back to council on the 7th of June to kind of clarify and just make sure we're on the right track for that project. So I think at that point, we'll have more information about, you know, the approach with looking at transit. One of my tasks, once I can get past a few of these typically, the task is to sit down and write the memo to council about where we're at with transit, work that we're directed to do. One of the things that we're going to be suggesting is a transit study, and we talked a little bit about this in the past, but the idea there is that we need to know, we need to know the problem, how big the problem is, and what the opportunity is to, in order to be able to effectively move forward on working with Metro about potentially buying service or otherwise improving service to the city. There's a couple of parallel things going on, and I, I think I mentioned last time we talked about something called the East Link Connections Partnership that Metro and Sound Transit are undertaking right now to restructure service.
Yep.
Once the light rail comes online on the east side. So there are some changes coming from that. So we're trying to, you know, just get our heads wrapped around that and make sure we can move. So forthcoming, I do apologize, it's taken some time, but we've had a lot going on.
No, totally. I just feel like before we kind of lock in on certain road projects, it would be good to know if that's, you know, just to have that information as part of the equation. So appreciate that, Doug.
Absolutely.
And then a couple of projects that I do think maybe we should consider adding to the list. TR 04, if I understand that, isn't that that intersection, isn't, I want to say that, that that was deemed a bit of a safety issue, because it's really, isn't that the one where you come down the hill and then you turn onto the Parkway, that intersection?
Yes.
Yeah.
That is a, yes, that's correct. That is a, it used to be a failure. It used to not meet our intersection standards, but it actually does meet the standards now. So it is a project that had been on the list for quite some time, and it's, it's a relatively straightforward project in my assessment. I don't know if Jeff Rogers has a different assessment of it, but I, I do think it's just some intersection improvements, mini roundabout. So anyway, yeah, that has been on the list for a little while.
I, I wouldn't mind seeing that one, and actually the one below it, TR 61. Is TR 61, is that, is that the crest?
That's actually the intersection where the northeast Mamish Water District is.
Oh, sorry.
Jeff, I and Audrey were just talking about this, and this one actually needs to come off the list.
Got it.
Because we have a solution that is not a signal solution.
Got it. Is the crest, is an intersection or an improvement at the entrance to the crest, is that on this list?
Pacific Crest, is that the?
No, it's just called the crest. It's like there's a Heritage Hills and.
It's a neighborhood called.
It is?
I think it's on the list.
It is?
I think it's on the list.
Because that's been one that's been problematic for a while.
It's not 40th or something else, but I think it's like this.
Yeah. I think we need to look into that one. I'll, I'll put that on the list to look into.
Okay. Yeah, if you could, the, the one I think, Karen, you're thinking of is the Southeast 40th. That's the one down at Mamish Highlands on the south end. Yeah, I, I think. Yeah, I think that one at the intersection, because there's a Sahar, or there's a Heritage Hills and the Crest kind of cross there. And I would agree that like there may be other long-term things we're doing, but that may be one where, you know, a signal might be appropriate in the interim, given the the challenges, because it's a blind hill there. And my understanding is that most of the time, people come flying over that hill. So if you're trying to come out of the crest and make a left-hand turn, or if you're trying to come out of Heritage Hills and make a left-hand turn, it can get a little dicey when people are kind of flying at about 55 up over that hill. So those would be two that I wouldn't mind seeing, maybe move up on the list and seeing if we can find some revenue sources to cover those. And then.
When you say revenue sources, do you have suggested revenue sources? Or are you suggesting staff use our magic wand and try to find, you know, a different combination?
Hey, if you have a magic wand, Jeff, then always use the magic wand. But I'm just saying that, like, if you're trying to balance it and you add those projects and it doesn't balance, then then, you know, if you need our help, like, you got to tell us what, you know, if we got to make some tough decisions somewhere or whatever. So that's all I was saying is.
Okay.
But magic wands are always appreciated.
Right.
And then I just had, I hate to ask this, I know you tried to answer it in email, and Councilmember Moran asked about it, but the the roundabout in front of the fire station, isn't that the one where they did the really cool modeling for us, where we like drove down the road, right, and they did all the modeling to turn that roundabout into a signal? And were you saying, Jeff, that you don't think we should make it a signal? You think we should try to make it a signaled roundabout? Because I thought when they did that modeling, one of the challenges, even making that bigger, is it's really tough for the fire trucks to get around the roundabout. And so they had done quite a bit of study on making that roundabout bigger versus making it a signal, and had concluded that a signal was really the best. And we got to see, they did really cool, remember that video? And it was like we were driving down the road and they showed all the modeling? So I'm just curious what what additional modeling we need to do there, because I I thought that one was kind of like ready for design.
Yeah, so what happened was is as we took additional traffic counts and we had Victor Salmon take a look at the traffic counts that were occurring there, the roundabout, and as it was proposed to be redesigned, wasn't working properly in the computer models. And it was puzzling us for quite some time. And there are different modifications to the roundabout that need to occur. And we are looking at, if you're going to spend a whole bunch of money, I think there's more cost-effective solutions. And so I want to explore those first, i.e. a signalized roundabout, before we embark upon ripping the entire intersection out for multi-millions of dollars and putting back a signal. Because a roundabout has eight conflict points for accidents versus a signal that has 32 points for accidents. And so before we do that, I want to be, I want to be sure, I want to dot the i's and cross the t's and double check and see if there's another another option that we can explore.
Okay.
And it's based on the input of the traffic counts and our current traffic engineer, consultant engineer.
And speaking of traffic counts, can we get those?
We're working on them. We're, we just, we just received those. We're in the process of doing QA QC on those. It'll be a few weeks out before they're available for distribution, at least a few weeks, it could be longer. Again, I'm short-staffed in my traffic division and trying to fit the QA QC work in, but we'll get those to you as soon as they're available.
Okay, I'll go really fast here. Why is the Public Works Trust Fund loan repayment still on there when I think it's already repaid?
Because the comprehensive plan for 2015 had it as a project. We just paid it off, and it does need to come off the list.
Okay, perfect.
It's a great question, but it was there before, and now we're going to take it off.
Okay. And then, and I think this is kind of adding on to Councilmember Moran's question, there are a list of projects that don't have funding, the sidewalks, the intersection and safety, school zones, street lighting. They're on the list, they're in the yellow zone, but they have zero funding. So what's the thinking around that? Because if they don't have any funding, that means we're not really planning to do anything, but yet they're yellow.
So the answer to that question was, is that we haven't parsed out the money, if you will, as placeholder money, if you go back to the 2000, the 2019 tip that was for 20 through 25, had buckets of money identified, also in the comp plan, it shows that. Last year, we actually combined them, because sidewalks and intersections and and whatnot kind of all felt the same thing, rather than, you know, A through H, we could combine those. But then we thought, well, maybe we should pull them back out. So, you know, we just need to put more money back in there, but it's going to come from the numbers that are on the table, because there aren't new revenue streams yet available that we can balance to, based on what we think the council has told us.
For the project that's underway right now at 202, an Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway that's being worked on, do we have any idea how that's going to alter the traffic flows?
This is the one outside the city, Doug?
Yes, it is outside the city. It's the one at the Whole Foods intersection. But that intersection has a huge impact on the morning flows off of Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway.
We would have to converse with our counterparts at City of Redmond, we've not done that.
Okay.
But it's a City of Redmond project.
Yep.
And be honest with you, I have not been following it. And so it's something that we can take a look at and see that they can share with us.
Okay. And then I know you guys are trying to balance things out, but I also have a, I love efficiencies, and I would love if we can, you know, provide direction, that whenever there are going to be, you know, improvements made by developers, that we take a look and see if we need to up the priority on any of the, you know, some of these gap projects and things. The biggest project that comes to mind, because it's near where I live, is Southeast 8 by Big Rock Park, right? There was a lot of, there were a lot of improvements done along there by the developer, and we didn't kind of hop on the bandwagon there and do, you know, probably about 20 feet worth of work to extend that to the intersection. And then on the other end, as you kind of approach 212, there would be a slight stretch there. But that's a road that, because there's a park, a lot of people walk and bike along there, and there's one section, a big section, that's now improved, but then the rest of the road still has no shoulder. I mean, part of that road doesn't even have a shoulder. You're like on the road or you're in the ditch. And so it's really unsafe. So I would love to see if there's a way, when those things come through, can we coordinate with DCD to know, hey, maybe we need to come back to council and say we need to go work on this, because this is an opportunity. It's already going to be under construction, it's already going to be torn up or blocked off. Let's finish that, so we don't have these partial sections that go nowhere. That would just be my 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 dream.
I can.
Yeah, go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, I can take that one. So it's actually much harder to coordinate that than it seems. I actually had, I was in community development for a little while, and I was one of the many planners on that subdivision. It actually came in in 2014, I believe. It got appealed twice. It took many, many years to get to the point that it is now. And so it's, I'm saying that because it's actually really hard to predict. The private development deploying public infrastructure is, it's very common in the city, right? All the subdivisions have built their frontage improvements, and, you know, over time, they connect and they should, they should create cohesive corridors. And that one was hard, because it was in a part of the city that is, for all intents and purposes, much more rural than other parts of the city. And so you had this 36-lot subdivision right in the middle of kind of a completely unimproved area, as you mentioned. It's a rural road, it's got very tight shoulders, it's got ditch on one side, so it has a lot of needs. And the city is currently pursuing that project via grant application. So just the timelines are really hard to mesh. You're absolutely right. To the extent that we can do that, it's something we should, but it's it's actually much harder to do than than it seems. Just that project is like truly beyond its age here in some form of the process. So, yeah, it can get pretty, pretty complicated and nuanced if you dig into it. But we do agree that, to the extent that we can combine those, absolutely.
And I will go to Walmart and see if I can find another wand, just for Pam's request there, so.
Hey, I've got Pixie Dust, but yeah, we can, we can do that, too. All right. Thank you very much, appreciate it, guys.
Councilmember Moran.
Okay, mine is super quick, and it is regarding whether we go back and try to fix the TMP, or we go and we worked with your system completion program plan, either one. I just want to make sure that, as we go back and have to to fix things, that we include a section for our emergency exit out of the city.
I think that's a reasonable request. I think it's something that we are working with Andrew Stevens on our emergency plan as well. He has a a study underway to look at the exit routes in the city. The other thing that I'd like to do is bring our traffic consultant back and have a dialogue with the council regarding the TMP, the TMP versus the transportation element versus system completion, and have a dialogue with the council and see where the council truly wants to go. It's not that I don't, I'm not saying I don't want to do it, but I think what we need to do is have a greater dialogue amongst this leadership group and, you know, investigate, you know, how do we go forward? And what is the best way? Is it the TMP and dusting it off? Is it something different? I think they're all great ideas, but I think it requires more dialogue, and I want to bring our consultant back in and have that with you at a later date as well.
Okay. And then you mentioned that, and I did have two things. So you mentioned that $8 million came in today from, or something about $8 million coming from the Issaquah School District. Did we finally get something from them on the school down there?
No. I I put $8 million as a placeholder. I really think it's 16 to 20 some million dollars. They had identified something in their bond program. We've tried to get ahold of Tom Mullins, who wasn't available this week. Whatever that number is, it is their mitigation estimate for the, for the, you know, the lanes, the signal, the frontage improvements, pedestrian improvements, and the flying key at 40. That's all one big bucket, that that $8 million will really be probably 24 million, or whatever the number is going to be, we just don't have it yet.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And lastly, lastly, one other thing, because it's been brought up by the attorney, Rick Arambro. The issue of an interlocal agreement, last year, we began a dialogue with the school district to go after potential grant funding. We got pretty far along in the framing of that, and then Rick Arambro and the attorney's office put a challenge out that we had not done enough environmental work to explore that possibility of extending and widening the intersection as a part of their project. And that was late in the fall when we got that. And so due to the work plans and whatnot with city attorney, Lisa Marshall and I were not able to sit down and evaluate in detail Rick Arambro's claim of of inefficiency or ineffective, whatever the terminology was that he had in his letter. And to date, I'll be honest with you, we have not had the time to go back and reevaluate that with current city attorney, Carrie Sand. And so at the moment, there is no plan for an interlocal agreement on the table to pursue grant funding as of yet. Would like to maybe, but I need more bandwidth and, you know, city attorney time to be able to really sit down and evaluate the claims and and things that were brought out in that letter from last fall. So I wanted to get that on the table, so you understood this concept of an interlocal agreement, where it came from and why it's not moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Back to you, Kaylee.
Great, thank you, guys. Do we have anything else? I know we have about 10 minutes left before we need to extend. Oh, you can't extend? Anyways, so Jeff and Doug, do you guys think you have what you need?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think we have really good direction. I've written some notes. We have some cleanup that we need to do on the tip. We need to verify some dollar figures. We need to update the maps, we need to do a few things, so there, there's some cleanup. I didn't hear anything like, you know, too, what's, what's the word, but too significant that would make me think that we need to overhaul this. So I think we're, I'm assuming we're on the right track. It sounds like the questions were less kind of core issues and more like, kind of, you know, on the, on the edges issues. I think that's fair to say. But suffice it to say, we do have some editing to do, so there will be another shot for the council to continue to amend this, and that would be on June 7th, we'll open a public hearing. So I think the only other thing, Audrey, was the stormwater contribution, stormwater utility contribution. I think that was something that we might want to keep at the forefront of conversation for next time. Is that fair to say?
We can come back with a little bit more detail, but I think we have some good guidance today.
Okay. So, yeah, I think if that's okay, I think we'll clean this up and we'll get it back to council and continue the conversation on the 7th. Thank you again for the incredible input. I think, you know, these two workshops today and the 26th of April have honestly been incredibly helpful. We often don't get enough, what I mean to say is, we often don't get three hours to sit with council and talk about a project. So we really appreciate that. We know you're taking extra time out of your schedules, and the deep focus on one topic, I think, is really beneficial to us. So I personally appreciate that. I know, I'm sure Jeff and Audrey do as well, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you all so much for your hard work. I know we, a city council, love all the details, so I'm sure we try and bog down, too. So thank you all. All right, well, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
All right, moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, 6-0, we are adjourned.